He made knives and fins and...
Vanessa, can you call the roll, please? I was sitting here waiting on Mark.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here. Item B is Pledge of Allegiance led by Marley Underwood with Girl Scout Troop 711. Oh, she's not here, okay. I'll lead it. (laughing) Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is swearing in of the newly-elected mayor and city council members Mark Hamm, Adam Webb, Rob Clark, Louis Williams, by Judge Blake Virgin.
Those of you in this morning, I ask you to please stand at this time. You please raise your right hand and be there for me. I state your name. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend...
I will support, obey, defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
I will like no one to receive...
I will not like no one to receive...
Either directly or indirectly.
Either indirectly or indirectly.
And none of your other valuable things.
None of your other valuable things.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Any act or duty.
Any act or duty.
And my office.
And my office.
I present the compensation allowed by law.
I present the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
I will perform my duties.
I will perform my duties.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
And mayor.
And...
The City of Moore.
The City of Moore.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Call the roll, right? You call the roll, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, we call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Mark Hamm?
Here.
And just one quick word. If you were here for the swearing-in, you are not expected to stay for the whole council meeting. That's why we did the reception at the very beginning. You're welcome to stay if you've never attended a meeting. But if you need to go, that is okay. I would say, I would like to say one thing about this journey. It has, you know, we've had our current mayor, or our former mayor now, that'll take a while to change. Glenn Lewis had been here for 30 years. And so, all of us in this room and up here have great respect for him and the job that he has done. And he will be missed. And we will be recognizing him at our next council meeting. And I would also just, I just want to share one quick story. And I've shared it, yeah, now here's the deal, you know. At church, they used to give me the microphone and they would let me say a few things, but I guess I said something I shouldn't have, and so they quit letting me say things. But now I have a microphone and have an audience, so it's even better. Generally, when a council meeting is this full, it's not good. But this is a good, a good night, and we're excited to see everybody here. But, once I, when I got elected to the council as Ward Two, a little over 11 years ago, August 12th now, I had to go out and knock doors. But I never drew another opponent during the times for reelection. So I wasn't forced to get back out there and knock on doors. Running for mayor, I had to go back out and get in the community and knock on the doors. And that was a very good and a healthy thing, to reconnect with the people that live here in Moore, Oklahoma. And I talked to as many of them as I possibly could. A lot of stories, some of them inappropriate, and I can't share them here, but just, just a few. I remember a gentleman, as I was sharing why I wanted to be mayor, and he had my flyer in his hand, and as I'm talking to him, he's like twisting it, and then he starts tearing it in two. And I'm, you know, telling him why I would like to be mayor, and he seems to be engaged, and and then I asked him if I could put a sign in his yard, and he said sure. So, did he vote for me or not? I, I have no idea, but I was getting mixed signals from him. But then one, one story that I'll remember forever, her name is Tina, is what they, what she goes by. She has a Choctaw name, but everybody calls her Tina. And she was, I believe, 82, and she had recently, or not recently, but she had retired from her job. And as I knocked on her door, she knew everybody on her street. And not in a nosy neighbor kind of way, but she knew what was going on with her neighbors. And she started telling me about the person that lived over here and, and their kids, or when somebody started driving a car, or somebody was sick. She said when she retired from her job, she started making Christmas cakes. So she would bake these cakes for her neighbors and take them around, and just began to have a relationship with those people that lived on her street. And I had knocked on a door not far from there, and that person that I spoke with just wasn't very friendly. And I thought, well, maybe they didn't like me, or I don't know, you know? I was kind of making it about me. And then I asked Tina, I said, Tina, what about this person? What's going on with them? And she said, oh, Mark, that's, yeah, that's so-and-so, and she lost her husband about three months ago. And so, Tina reminded me, she said, Mark, every door that you knock on and everybody that you talk to, they all have a story to tell, and you don't know what's going on in their lives. And so, if they're not happy, or if they're not excited to see you, it might not, and probably has nothing to do with you. That woman was grieving the loss of her husband, and she could really care less about who the next mayor of Moore was going to be. But it was just a reminder that sitting up here isn't about any of us. Yes, we go out and knock and tell people all about ourselves and why we want the jobs, but it's really about our city, and trying to be the best representative that we can be, and represent the people that live here in Moore, Oklahoma. And I can tell you that everybody up here has the right motives for being on this council. We, we don't have our own personal agendas. Our agenda is the agenda of the city, and we want to do what's best for Moore, Oklahoma. And that's the prism that I look through, not what's best for me, or for where I go to church, or for a business, but what's best for our city as a whole. So, we are all very humbled that you're here, and I'm very humbled to get to serve as our mayor for the next four years, and we'll, we'll be very diligent in, in trying to be the best, best mayor that I can be. So, again, thank you for being here, and if you want to stay, you're welcome, but if you need to, to go, you can do that, too. And if anybody else wanted to say something, you're welcome, I didn't want to monopolize that time. No? Okay. Well, now, we're gonna, we're gonna begin our council meeting. Okay, and item two is our consent docket. And we gotta... Did we not do the roll call?
We did, we did.
Yeah, we did. We did.
Yeah.
No, we only did our, city manager wasn't paying attention.
Your, your story was so long, you forgot.
Yes. Anyways, well, we, our consent docket, and do I have a motion to accept the, accept and approve the consent docket items A through E?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second?
Yes.
Best first, uh... Yeah. First decision debate.
Amen.
Awesome. This is great job. All right, you call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Hamm?
Yes. Consent docket passes. Item three is Consider Rezoning Application Number 1043, Located in the southwest quarter section of 14 Township, 10 North, uh, is that rural?
Range.
Range, 3 West, being south of Northwest Fifth Street, and west of I-35 Service Road, from C-5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C-3 General Commercial District. And Approve Ordinance Number 2724, Application by John Chambers III. Planning Commission Recommended Approval, 7 to 0, and this is in Ward Three.
Mayor and Council, this site is located south of Northwest Fifth Street and east of Telephone Road. The property is currently zoned C-5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District, and has an existing building on the site. The applicant is proposing to remodel the building into a dental laboratory, which does not fit into the current C-5 zoning. Therefore, a rezoning to the C-3 General Commercial District is required. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Because this is just remodeling a building and no new development, there is no stormwater detention required, and access is provided by North Telephone Road. The Invision Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be transitional commerce. Transitional commerce is intended to create a buffer between arterial roads and neighborhoods. Typical uses include heavy commercial, light industrial, and some supporting office uses. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the comprehensive plan, and there is, staff believes that this is in conformance with the plan, and amendment is not necessary. This application does seek to rezone a developed lot into a lighter commercial use, while maintaining the character of the area. Due to that fact, staff does recommend approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Hamm?
Yes, item carries. Item four is Consider Final Platte of DM Estates Located at Southeast Fourth, Section 18 Township 10 North, Range 2 West, Being north of Southeast Fourth Street and west of Sunny Lane Road. Application is by Sanjay Marika. If I'm pronouncing that wrong, I'm sorry. Planning Commission Recommended Denial, 5 to 2. This is in Ward Two.
Mayor and Council, this site is located north of Southeast Fourth Street and east of Bryant Avenue. The property is currently zoned R1 Single Family Dwelling District and is vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the lot as a single-family residential development of approximately 3.62 acres, with one formalized common area for detention and nine residential lots. This results in an overall density of under 2.5 living units per acre. The preliminary platte was approved in November of 2023. The final platte is what is now under consideration. Public water is available along Southeast Fourth Street. Sanitary sewer is available to the south by an 8-inch gravity line in the Rock, excuse me, the Rock Creek Edition. Storm sewer detention for this development is required. There is also a FEMA floodplain located along the west side of the property. The applicant will be required to establish the base flood elevation and comply with the 2021 drainage criteria, and that does include a 30-foot channel maintenance access easement from the top of bank of the channel, along with the drainage easement that includes the regulatory floodplain. Access for the addition is provided by Southeast Fourth Street, a four-lane urbanized roadway, and no lot will be allowed direct access to Southeast Fourth Street. The final platte differs from the approved preliminary platte through the deletion of one lot due to the increased arterial right-of-way width and the inclusion of a 30-foot channel maintenance access easement from the top of bank and the drainage easement that includes the regulatory floodplain. It should be noted that the easement requirements result in a limited buildable area for lots four through seven. To provide for more buildable lots, the developer has agreed to move the detention pond from Lot 5 to Lot 4. This results in reserving the smallest lot for drainage and detention, allowing the bigger Lot 5 to be used for a home site. Additionally, lots one through three on the original final platte that was submitted were reworked to get required lot width. This resulted in deleting one lot, so the application, or the platte in your packet, does show 10 lots, but the revised platte, which I have placed in front of you in this size, does show the revised final platte that deleted the one lot. So there are now a total of nine lots in the addition. The Invision Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be urban residential. Land uses in urban residential include a mix of single-family detached units and up to seven dwelling units per acre. This application was reviewed as the conformance with the intent of the plan, and because the application does meet the density and the open space requirements of the plan, an amendment to the plan is not necessary. This application is for the consideration of the final platte only of the DM Estates addition. There has been some concern raised about the residential density of the addition. However, the density was decided with the R1 zoning designation of the property that was approved years ago. Being that the property is currently zoned R1, then the platte must conform with the minimum requirements laid out by the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations, which this revised platte that you have in front of you does. At the planning commission meeting, there were a total of eight citizens from the Old Stonebridge Edition who spoke in opposition of this final platte. Their concerns were many, but they focused around two general areas. Number one, that the neighborhood is not like the Old Stonebridge Edition with smaller lots and smaller homes. Number two, that the drainage was a concern. And I would note that while density is certainly a concern with the neighbors, that's an issue that should be taken up at the rezoning and not the final platte. The question before us today is, does the final platte conform with the R1 zoning district that it is zoned? And the platte that you have in front of you does conform to that. So, you do have the revised final platte. One final note, just is about the planning commission meeting itself and the vote. The planning commission meeting took many turns, they had a fair amount of discussion amongst the members. The first motion was to deny, that motion failed due to a lack of a second. The second motion was to table, and that motion also failed. The third motion was to approve, and that motion failed 2 to 5. Now, in speaking with the city attorney, and in retrospect, that should have stopped at the third motion, in which case it would have been no recommendation. However, we did go on, there was a final motion to deny, and that was approved 5 to 2. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, the applicant is present as well.
So, the concern of drainage, are we, obviously, they have their engineer, but will we send MESHAC out to take a look at it and make sure that, is that, that's a fair concern that...
Yes, absolutely. This is in a, there is a floodplain on the property. So, yes, MESHAC will be reviewing their plans, and there are new requirements in the 2021 drainage criteria to help prevent any flooding events. So, a special attention will definitely be paid to that. But just as a reminder, that this is in a floodplain, and floodplanes do flood occasionally.
Elizabeth, if you don't mind, could you refresh my memory? On the preliminary platte, were there 10 lots originally, or 11?
There were 11 lots, and with the preliminary platte, yes.
And so, two have been removed, is...
Yes.
I know you covered a little bit of this, but that was for, was that because of the detention, the pond or green space?
Yes, the, the, the reason why the lots were removed is, I mean, just to, in general, there was too many lots on such a small piece of property.
Okay.
They didn't really meet the, the city code as far as lot area. And one lot in particular would, just had such a tight building envelope that you could build a house on, that, you know, they decided to move the detention pond and, and rework the, the addition.
And just to confirm, so by doing this, this does, the density does, it falls within the R1?
Yes, yes, it does.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council before we have some people that did sign up?
Did I, do I look at it right, that there, there is, and you said there is only one entrance in?
Yes, there is one entrance in, it is just one cul-de-sac street.
So, did you tell us staff's recommendation?
Staff recommends to approve this simply because it does meet all of R1 requirements, and that is by code what we have to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There are some people that signed up, so I'll call your name and come on up, and you'll have five minutes before you speak. Just please state your name and your address, and our, we'll let you know when your five minutes is up. The first person is John Brink?
John Crittenbrink.
Oh, excuse me.
409 South Riverside Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to hear you. I spent 35 years in construction, both residential and commercial. You can tell by looking at me, I've got at least 35 years. My concern with this project is, I've never done a project in 35 years that I did. It was not, before I could start the project, I received a complete set of architectural and engineering plans. I have never seen any engineering on this project. We talk about a retention pond. The retention pond is drawn, but it's four lots upgrade. There's four lots that exist below the retention pond. How is the water to get there? Now, I did a retention pond in Edmond, Oklahoma, to their specifications. They gave me the exact size, they gave me the discharge. I had to prevent, I had to prepare a discharge, we would let the 50-year floodplain flow at one area, and 100-year floodplain another. Not a problem. I did, I did in Stillwater, we built a large development up there. Everything was engineered for the city council to see. The size of the sewer line, where it was going, all water retention, we had a retention area there, too. Everything, the streets, the streets, how were the streets to be constructed? In Stillwater, you had two choices. You built them to the city's specifications, and at that time, the city would take control of the streets for the future. Now, Moore has set, we just passed a $20 million bond issue to improve sewer system utilities and streets in the City of Moore, and I applaud you for that. But you have exact specifications of what you want these contractors to put in, because you don't want to be back there in two years fixing streets. So, I'm concerned about the engineering. The sewer, sewer line size, water size, we haven't seen any of this. The location of the retention pond, the size of it, how the overflow is to work, and I don't know how we handle the four lines, the four long, the four homes that are downgrade from it. There is some areas where we are definitely in a FEMA floodplain. We exist the same thing over at Old Stonebridge. My particular lot that I built on has a floodplain behind it, I'm well aware of that. And FEMA is, too, so I had to build accordingly, which I did. The lot sizes are an issue to us. You have been to probably in Old Stonebridge, there are bigger homes. And I don't know where you live, but I'm confident that most of you wouldn't want a, a house sat next to you on a 50-foot lot. But that's not for me to say. I'm concerned about the engineering. If it's, you said it right, Your Honor, when you said, "We want the best for Moore", and that's what I'm asking for. I want something done with specifications. You have a great set of inspectors in this community, in this city. I have worked with them on numerous occasions, but they've got to come out and have something they can see. They've got to see what the retention pond's supposed to look like before they can inspect it. They can't just expect a, a swimming pool and say that's a retention pond. They need to see a sewer line, who's putting it in, is he qualified, is he licensed, is it proper? These are the things that the only inspectors, they have to have information, or they can't properly inspect it. And so far, I have personally seen none of this. So I'd ask that you take this into consideration, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Barbara Johnson?
I'm Barbara Johnson, I live at 205 South Old Bridge Road in Moore. We still have questions concerning DM Estates. I think the most significant one is the report from Congressman Cole's office from FEMA that advises us to talk with the city to see if they have plans to reduce the risk of flooding in that area, because, per the data, there is a risk. Does the city have a plan? Can the city determine if flood insurance will be required for new potential homeowners of DM Estates? Does the city have full disclosure requirements for developers to provide all known information to potential homebuyers? Can the city provide an increased risk of flooding estimates that may be caused by DM Estates development? If increased stormwater runoff from DM Estates raises the floodwater in OSB Creek and increases the force of the water enough to damage the OSB Bridge and our front entrance, what will OSB's recourse for repair be? Will the city require a retaining wall between DM Estates and the creek to control and minimize water, erosion, and pollution runoff from the development into the creek? When heavy rains fill OSB Pond, the overflow flows towards the creek, but that ground is already saturated. Water is already standing there, and we're flooded. Our front entrance is flooded, for days at times. Will the overflow from the DM Estates retention pond run into the creek? Will there be safeguards to prevent the overflow of water from the retention pond into the creek? Will there be a fence built around the development, such as the creek that is, such as the fence that is across the street around Rock Creek, to help keep the look of the area similar? At the March 12th planning meeting, the developer had his attorney tell the planning committee that the house is built would be 1,800 to 2,000 square feet. We were very happy to hear the developer commit to building 1,800 to 2,000 square foot homes. I'll email these questions to Ms. Wheatman and to the city council, and I will appreciate an acknowledgement of the receipt of my email and an estimated date when you think these questions will be answered. This is something that we are very concerned about, and I'll give the mayor a copy of Colonel, of Congressman Cole's email that I received with the FEMA report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Dawn Jackson.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dawn Jackson, I live at 212 Alyssa Lane. That is also an Old Stonebridge Edition. I am the president of our Homeowners Association. Mr. Crittenbrink is on that board, with some other board members that are here also tonight. I'm not sure if all of them wish to address you, but I wanted to address, one of our biggest concerns here is economics. For those of you that don't know what Old Stonebridge is, we're private, we pay for our own streets, we're a gated community. These are 3,000 square foot minimum homes, there are 75 residences in our neighborhood. Each lot is in excess of one acre, okay? There is no fencing allowed except for around swimming pools, and then it cannot be sight-proof fencing. It is open, it is green, it is treed, it is gorgeous, okay? Very conservatively, the estimated land value of the homes in our neighborhood is around $50 million. If you approve this platte, you allow this built of these small homes right next door, it will hurt the property values there. Estimates are anywhere from 10 to 15 percent per residence, okay? We're talking about a $5 million impact to our neighborhood. That is substantial. It also affects the tax base, which affects every citizen in the City of Moore. That's our major concern. I have talked to many of the residents in our neighborhood, not all of them, but many of them. Not a one is wanting this. Property values and flooding are our two biggest concerns. However, there's the aesthetics. I understand when people don't want things built in their backyard. Not in my backyard attitude. We hear that all the time. We're hearing about ad nauseam about the Oklahoma County jail, but that's to be located. However, this is not in our backyard. This is in our front yard. This addition will be immediately adjacent to the old bridge entrance of which several hundred thousand dollars were put into those bridges, those walls, that street. We pay tens of thousand dollars a year to maintain that area. Us homeowners, us seventy-five homeowners pay for all that out of our own pocket. That doesn't cost the city anything. If there's flooding and if there's damage and if that extends out to Forest Street, every citizen more will be paying to fix that, not just us. So it affects everyone. Everyone in this room, certainly everyone on the council. I understand and the HO board wants to be clear that R1 zoning is better than a dollar store, obviously in a storage unit, something like that. It's not the houses themselves, it's the size and they're half the size of our neighborhood or less. It's going to cost us dramatically. It's going to cost every homeowner to lose money. We don't have any other way to address it other than ask you folks. Mr. Crittenbrink, who spoke to you earlier, he's our expert on construction and application in the rules and stuff like that. He brings a lot of good points. I don't want to belabor his points. I would probably say something wrong if I did. I don't want to do that. I do know our neighborhood doesn't want this. It's not in accordance with our neighborhood. Now, think about what's next door to that. Immediately to our west is Windermere, also very large, beautiful homes. All of them twenty-five hundred, three thousand feet or larger, large lots. Across the street to the south, immediately adjacent is Rock Creek Edition. Also, big, beautiful homes, all requiring rock and brick and other things to be in accordance with the neighborhood. They all blend in together. None of those played. When this developer first proposed this, he met with a few of the members of the board in the neighborhood, not all of them, but a few. And at that time, he promised he'd put a wall up. He promised he'd do retention ponds. He promises all sorts of different things. He promised an HOA and that he himself would be on it, administer it. None of these are in that final plat. None of those things are. He hasn't started yet. He's not making his, he's not meeting the promises he made. And none of that he ever put in writing of anyone. Old Stone Bridge doesn't want this next to us, folks. Please don't let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maggie Ricks? Is Maggie here?
She's coming.
Okay.
There's more of you than I thought.
You might have to share.
It's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to kind of take you through this. I'm going to probably go really fast, so I'm going to ask, some of this I presented last time. Some of it went to the planning committee, but I wanted to kind of encapsulate it all together so that y'all could look through everything.
And just give us your name and your address.
Oh, Maggie Ricks, 208 South Old Bridge Road. Okay. Last time I did not have all these pictures for y'all, so I wanted to make sure that you had the pictures of all the flooding and everything that we experienced. First page is our entrance and how it floods, sometimes for three and four days at a time. And we have to drive all the way around the neighborhood and go out Riverside Drive. Anyway, there's, so there is a lot of flooding going on. What you're going to hear me talk about is the FEMA plan that was done in February of two thousand thirteen. The tornado hit May of two thousand thirteen, took out two hundred trees. This is your own envisioned twenty forty plan and you can tell, we've read it. We know it. It's highlighted all over the place. I've given you a bunch of papers out of it and everything. Even in your papers and in the book, it talks about trees and everything and how important that is to keep a place from flooding. Well, we've lost a lot of trees. We lost more trees in Veterans Park or anyplace else than Moore. But so, and what it used to be a hundred-year floodplain, which is what FEMA shows for the properties, is now it's flooding three to four times a year. So we have a major problem going on. We're working with Tom Cole. We're also working with Jonathan Phillips from CFM from the State of Oklahoma Water Resource Board. He's working with us so that we can address this. What we need, what I asked last time and asked the planning committee, we want to work with you on this. And you're going to see on these actionable items, everything that's bolded and highlighted are things I considered actionable items between us and you that we would like answers for and everything. We want, I believe Jonathan Phillips said that you had a guy Chad Denson, and I've left him a message. Haven't heard back from him yet. But, but just recently left it, so I don't mean it like that. But anyway, we want to work with you, but we want someone that doesn't sit up in an office and looks at a floodplain map that was done before the tornado and just checks everything off and says it's okay because it's not okay. We've already spent as a homeowner association, thousands of dollars on our bridge. And if we have excess water and everything else coming in even more, it's going to get worse. And then who's responsible for that? Are you responsible because the city approved it or is the developer responsible? Those are questions that we have. But anyway, so we are, we are very aggressively working with Tom Cole, Jonathan Phillips. Will love to work with Chad Denson, but we need to get some people out there, lay their eyes on it, not just look at a map or whatever. So that's one thing I would ask. Also with the flooding and everything, we have stagnant water, mosquitoes, other insects smell, things that are health hazards and everything else. One thing I want to draw your attention to, this map is the first map that we were given on the plat, so the numbers aren't correct.
Sixty-second slide.
But what it does show, because it's color coded, where you can look at it easily and see where the flood zones are. If you look at the orange line in this, if you look at the next page, this is from the city of Moore. Lauren sent this to me. But this is the code for the city of Moore and it says the elevation has to be eleven ninety-two point eight feet to build on for these people that are going to have houses to be protected. Okay. If you look at this where the orange is all through the development, it's only eleven ninety. There's got to be massive, massive retaining walls, buildup, everything else. Because if someone does move in there, we want it done right. So anyway, so there's information on that in there.
That's time.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. You're out of time.
Is that my really?
Yeah.
Okay. Last thing I will say is the new plat at the planning committee said it was supposed to be fifty-five feet minimum. It's not. If someone will pull up the plat, I would appreciate it, or not the one that we were sent yesterday.
Yeah, they removed one of the, one of the homes to make that happen.
Yep. If the applicant is here or the representative, if you'd like to speak to anything that you've heard.
Yeah, definitely. Caitlin Turner, 522 Cole Court Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, here with us is also the civil engineer on the project that submitted all of the application and documents associated with it, which do include the drainage study and the paving and the wastewater main and sewer and all the things that are required with the final plat application. So all of that is being reviewed and still in review by you all's professional engineering and planning staff. And whatever is ultimately required upon their review, we will of course comply with. Couple of things to note, and I don't want to be repetitive from what Elizabeth had stated, but of course, we have decreased the number of lots within the final plat so that we are meeting all code requirements. This preliminary plat was approved in November twenty twenty-three with the eleven. We now have nine, so density has decreased. The comprehensive plan allows for and calls for seven dwelling units per acre. That has decreased to two point five dwelling units per acre with this. This is a smaller subdivision. We will be complying with all code requirements. We will be complying with all requests that the professional engineering and planning staff have before we start developing, before we can even go pull permits. So really, it's a matter of one, whether or not we do in fact comply with R1 regulations and whether we conform to the comprehensive plan. And there's case law on this regarding final plat applications. The preliminary plat has been approved. The only difference was a decrease in the number of lots. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have, but as the staff report stipulates and as Elizabeth stipulated, we are in compliance with all requirements that the city of Moore has for a final plat.
And to confirm, you guys went from eleven to nine in an effort to address all these concerns, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
The R1, not, not, not the Old Stone Bridge
Right.
concerns, but the, the concerns for the, to meet the R1 zoning.
And, and many of the concerns really are a question of compatibility, which again, as Elizabeth stated, would be brought up and assessed in a rezoning application. Of course, the zoning has been in place for many years, so it's really just one question at hand tonight and that's whether we comply with ordinance requirements, so. Any other questions you all have, I'd be happy to answer. Or if you have for our civil engineer.
So am I asking you a question? I don't know whether you'll answer. And if you don't, then that's fine. I'll put Elizabeth on the. The water from that property right now.
Yes.
When it rains, multiple inches, where does that water go today?
Today, I'm assuming it goes into the river, into the creek. Yes, correct. And we cannot increase historical runoff. That, that would be against the law, so.
I understand all that, but I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody in the room understands the water from that property today goes into the creek.
Correct.
Period.
Yes.
Any other, council have any other questions for the applicant's representative?
I don't.
No? Okay, then hearing no other questions, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Real quick, just for Elizabeth. Elizabeth, you do feel like the flooding concerns are going to be addressed long-term, correct? And that we'll have a third party investigate as well?
Correct. So what we do with this plat is make sure that this plat meets all of our drainage criteria, which means that there cannot be any more runoff than what is historically or what exists today. That the BFE downstream or upstream is not raised, that the velocities are not impacted. Those are requirements in our drainage criteria that we have to meet. And MESHAC will be reviewing those and they are thorough.
And that process has not happened yet.
They have gone through one round of reviews and comments have been returned to the engineer. We're waiting for the second round to come back. The other issue that they had, which is they are currently in a floodplain that appears to be flooding more often. That would be something beyond the scope of this final plat. That would be a larger project that the city would have to undertake to study the, this reach of the stream, to determine, you know, exactly what's going on and if additional flooding controls upstream need to be, you know, implemented. But that is a large public works project that is not on the onus of this applicant.
And to be clear, that flooding is happening now because there's runoff from that, as Councilwoman Louis said, that it's happening now, that runoff is going there now. So it's, and if you don't, if you don't increase the runoff, the same runoff is going into the creek once the development is done.
Yes. Yes.
And Elizabeth, just one quick question. Are we doing anything different with this plan versus other, other applicants that we've considered? I know the gentleman spoke about engineering.
No, the city code requires, does not necessarily require the engineering plans to be submitted with the final plat, however, this applicant did. So we've had the opportunity to go through our first review with that. But engineering plans go through a separate review process that does not come before planning commission or council. We have our standards and specifications that are published on our website and that's what our engineers review to, to make sure that they meet. So the developer knows and the engineer knows going into the project, what standards have to be met. They're creating their engineering plans to meet those standards. And our engineers are reviewing what they've submitted to make sure that they are meeting the standards that the city has set.
And there are staging points all through this process that can stop or review or hinder this process if any of that's not met.
Correct, correct. So, and for example, a work order for the actual construction of the improvements will not be issued until they have approved plans. You can't get approved plans until our engineers have given their final approval that says, yes, this does meet all city requirements.
And they're willing, they're willing to make any changes that need to be made?
Yes.
Well, and part of, part of what the city's doing now also is MESHAC is the party, the third party, an independent party from us that reviews all this stuff for us. And it's right along with all the floodplain documents that we have generated to improve what we got going. And so just trying to speak to the gentleman's questions about the engineering. It is fully covered from an engineering perspective. It's not in this document.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
All of the engineering information is part of this project.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and I understand the concern about the, the houses and, and the lots being smaller than what's in Old Stone Bridge. But as we've kind of stated, I mean, it's, it's zoned R1. And if this goes to district court, the district court's going to say it's zoned R1. There, I mean, residential up against residential, we ran it, we ran into it with the golf course, with Broadmoor Golf Course, same thing. You know, they didn't want, the homes up against it goes to district court, guess what? It's R, it's zoned R1. It can be developed as R1. And so, I mean, I, I think if it meets all of the R1 requirements, I mean, that's, that's where we are.
Okay. If we can, in, in discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you for everybody who came out to speak on this item. That'll take us to item five is consider approval of a contract with Dillon and Associates to perform the city's annual audit for FY twenty-four in amount not to succeed sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Mayor and council, this is the, as the item says, contract for annual audit. We've used Dillon and Associates for a number of years. We're very happy with the service they provide. They do an excellent job for us. The proposed fee is very close to the fee from last year. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item six is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of twenty-one handheld police radios from L3 Harris in the total amount of sixty-two thousand, seventy-one dollars, eighty cents. That's two thousand, nine hundred, fifty dollars, eighty cents per radio using the city of Norman's discount as the lowest quote.
Mayor and council, this is a budgeted item and is the routine rotation and updating of officers' handheld radios. Recommend approval.
Does this replace all the radios?
No, just part.
No, sir. We, we do a certain percentage every year. And so this is twenty-one radios and so this is just a percentage.
Okay. And what percentage? Just curious how many years it takes.
Generally, every five years you'll get new radios.
Great. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item seven is consider the budgeted purchase of an in-car video systems and related equipment for six patrol vehicles for Motorola Solutions doing business as watch guard in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred, forty-two dollars using state contract three, seven, four, three, five dash OME S, OKSW, one oh five, three M.
Mayor and council, this is companion items seven, eight and nine. These, this is equipment used for outfitting and, and building out our new police vehicles that are, have already been purchased previously by council. are, have already been purchased previously by council and approved, and this particular item is the interior and exterior camera systems that go in the police cars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item eight is consider the budgeted purchase of equipment for installation on six patrol vehicles from Fleet Safety Equipment, Inc., doing business as Dana Safety Supply, in the amount of $84,959.12, using state contract number SW1042.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item nine is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of mobile police radios for six patrol vehicles from L3 Harris, in the amount of $31,800, using the City of Norman's discount as the lowest quote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 13 is consent docket. I just need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Consent docket carries. Item 14 is consider approving work order number two with Garver LLC, in the amount of $135,200 for design improvements of the wastewater treatment plant headworks building as part of the master agreement for professional services.
Do we need to approve the work order one first, or does it matter, the order?
Does it need to wait till the next meeting?
Next.
If it's going to be placed at the end of the. Of MPWA? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we can do that on the next item. Chairman and trustees, this particular item, over the years, the last 10 years out at the wastewater treatment plant, all of the wastewater that is, comes from our collection system, comes into the headworks, a building called the Headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. And, of course, because this is sewer water, it's very corrosive and has high hydrogen sulfide gas content. And what's occurring out at the wastewater treatment plant this time in the headworks building is that the, the roof itself is showing a lot, great signs of corrosion, and we're concerned that we probably need to move forward and make some improvements to the headworks building, and analyze and evaluate the existing odor control and, and hydrogen sulfide data to determine what, you know, what we can do to improve it from getting any worse, and then also to go ahead and, and do the design to re, to replace the existing roof. And so, this particular item hires Garver LLC, a local engineer who does wastewater and design, and we would recommend that we approve the contract to have them come in and, and evaluate the existing odor control system and the capacities of the hydrogen sulfide removal.
So, in that original building, was there any anticorrosiveness built into that original building, or is it just standard?
Well, I believe, no, I believe when it was, when it was installed, that there was some, you know, some additional paint and sealant that, you know, it's just that, it's just a very high corrosive environment.
Well, it's, that, that technology has gotten much more improved, so whereas you move forward on the new, on replacing it, redesigning, make sure that they look into the new technology on that corrosive coating.
Sure.
Yeah, that is a good point, because, I mean, it's what, 15 years old? 16?
No, no, about. I want to say, what, 10 years? It come online in 15? Yeah, 2013, so it's 11 years, yeah.
Perfect. So, yeah, hopefully, there've been some improvements with regard to the technology there, because doing this every 10 years is, it'll be tough. But I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Now, item 10. Okay. Now, we'll, we'll go back to item 10, which was moved to this, and it is, consider approval of change order number one, in the amount of $12,000 with McKee Utility Contractors LLC, and increase the contract time by eight calendar days for construction of the southeast lift station, 36-inch gravity flow sewer line project.
As we were constructing the 36-inch gravity flow line from the old lift station on 34th Street, just west of Ryan Avenue, we went ahead, or I'm sorry, Sunny Lane, the contractor encountered, as he was digging his, getting ready to excavate his boring pit to bore underneath 34th Street, he encountered the existing force main line from that lift station that went to the existing wastewater treatment plant. And on the plans, it was, the, the force main was not marked on the, it was shown on the plans, and, and we weren't able, we, we didn't get it marked before they had gone in and done some work. And so, the $12,000 for the change order is the, the cost of replacing the existing force main line, repairing the, the damage to the force main, backfilling, and then having to relocate over a little further to be able to do, continue the bore. And so, we would ask that you approve the change order number one for $12,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. All right. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 15 is the consent docket.
Motion to approve. Man, I like this one.
Second.
Okay. So, a motion to, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Consent dockets approved. We will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Just let the record show that everybody's still here. New business, item A, citizens forum, four items not on the agenda. There are no additional people signed up. Would anybody else like to speak? Is it about the same thing or something different?
Kind of different. That's pretty much the same.
Well, if you've already spoken that, I can't let you speak on it again, because you've had your, you've had your five minutes.
Okay. Maggie, we're 208 South Oakbridge Road. Okay. I just want to talk about that. The process that we went through, probably didn't really feel really served or anything. I just think it's sad that you didn't even take the time to go through any documents or even look at the plat or anything, or pull it up like y'all did last time. So, it's more about the process than it is about the OSB. Like I said, if you, I hope that each of you at least take the time to take the, I spent hours and hours doing this stuff, at least show the courtesy to take this and at least look at it. I mean, we've gone through this book for hours and hours and everything else. This book does say that you have the right to have architectural stuff. I gave you a lot of the pages that say that. There's, I mean, the book says that, that the, the housing that goes in is supposed to be compatible with Old Stone Bridge. The average square feet of the eight houses around that addition are 4,600 square feet, $877,000. That's not what they told us was going in. They told us 1,600 square feet when he met with us. That's the last we heard. You know, the only other thing is, I will be at every meeting I need to be at to make sure, because on the meeting notes when he first met with you, he told you he was going to do some things. They're not planning on doing them now, like the retention pond, the fencing, cleaning out the creek, the trees and greenway. I'm hoping that you have your people hold them accountable. But also, if you look at this, we weren't opposed, we did not like the way that they were doing it, but if they were going to do it, all we wanted you to do, if you read through here and look at the highlighted items, we were begging you to just have your people meet with us and talk to us and explain things to us. If, I, I mean, I really challenge you to really reread this, because that's all we asked as citizens, is just knowledge, just simple knowledge, just an acknowledgement that y'all cared. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Feel free to reach out to any of us on our, on our phones, published, and emails, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And council, or, yes, sir, come on up and just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Yeah. My name's John Chambers, 1912 Danville Drive in Norman, and I am the owner of the laboratory that we're moving, that we, we're doing a, removing our business from Norman to Moore, and I just wanted to appreciate, you know, express my appreciation to the council and to the council and also to the city staff for their professionalism and their assistance throughout the process. So I just want to introduce myself. We're very excited about coming and being part of the Moore community, and I just wanted to introduce myself.
Welcome to Moore.
Welcome.
We're glad to have you. Counsel, anybody?
Mark, I just want to say congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm excited for you, excited for the city, and looking forward to the next several years.
Yeah, me too. Item B is items from the, that was us, so item C would be the city manager. Do you have anything?
Would also like to congratulate the council members on their reelection and their new term. Mayor Ham, welcome back, congratulations.
Thank you.
This week, we received notice that we have a grant approval for approximately $900,000 to update camera and DVR equipment, so we're excited about that. We should also be receiving official notification from ACOG here shortly about being awarded some money for the street projects that our citizens voted on last November. And AT&amp;T was on Eastern Avenue yesterday and today.
Did everybody hear that?
I was so, I was so, I wanted to ask Jerry for an update, so he could get up there and say, guess what?
So, they're there.
They're working on our stuff.
They're working on, they're working on our stuff, and so my understanding is Allen Construction should be back on site within two to three weeks to finish up, hopefully. So it is getting there.
Yay.
Thank you, Paul.
That's, that's great, thank you. And thanks to the city staff and everybody that worked on applying for those ACOG grants.
Yeah.
That's millions of dollars. We're able to find additional revenue other than our tax dollars, municipal tax dollars anyway. So thanks to the staff for working on that. That would bring us to item 17, executive session. And I still have to read all this. It says, "Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following item. Item A, discuss, considering it deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim filed by the Oklahoma Legal Services on behalf of Kimberly Morton against the City of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to make action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307b4."
Make a motion. Convene to executive session.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, it'd be an executive session. Thanks, everybody, for coming and being here tonight.[1433.83]